Oh, you did that yourself.
It's a kind of idiot.
For me.
You ready?
I need that.
You ready?
Almost it.
Yep. Mr. Russell, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Weaver. Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's Easthamfield Township Board of Supervisor meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with the login and call information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded, and for tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply. The meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. And for people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address, and your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, we ask that you unmute your microphone, and after speaking, we're going to ask that you please mute your microphone. Easthamfield Township Public Comment Rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting purpose minutes, or follow the chat procedure previously discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of any non-emergency nature during public comment period. All comments should be directed to the board. We will now move on to our first agenda item, and I would ask that you join me and rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item up on our agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments or concerns from the board in regards to the consent agenda? Mr. Weaver.
Okay. I saw none. I'll just be abstaining for invoices.
Okay.
Be for the minutes.
Okay. You gentlemen want those pulled out, or?
Me too. Um, for me, yes, for the invoice, if you could vote separately.
Okay.
Minutes for me.
Okay. All right, so then we'll start with, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through H as presented?
So moved.
Okay. Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Item nine, or excuse me, item I, A, number two, aye, under the consent agenda approval of the June 21st, 2023 minutes, is there a motion to approve item I?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries four to zero with one abstention. And motion to approve Agenda Item 2J as presented, invoices from all funds covering June 23rd to July 7th, 2023.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. LaFevere, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention, thank you. Up next, um, under action items, we have U-Haul project on State Road waiver modifications and final plan.
Good evening, Claudia Shank with McNeese Wallace and Nurick here this evening on behalf of Amerco Real Estate Company, which is the real estate holding company for U-Haul. I'm joined tonight by several representatives of U-Haul, Mike Zemba in particular, will be speaking to you this evening a little bit about this project. Also joined by Paul Navarro, who is with Navarro and Wright Consulting Engineers and is the civil engineer for the project, as well as some folks from Wolfson Construction. The property that we're here to discuss tonight is a 13.3 acre tract northeast of 283 and State Road. It's located in the Community Business Center zoning district. It's part of a very small section of commercial land that's north of 283. Currently, the property is vacant. The proposed use of the site is a U-Haul moving and storage center with, which will contain a variety of components. Mr. Zemba can describe that in greater detail, but there will be self-storage facilities as well as a U-Box facility, uh, storage of recreational vehicles and boats, moving truck rental, and then sale of moving supplies such as boxes and packaging tape, et cetera. We have been before the board previously to talk about the, this proposed development, specifically in March of 2022, we did receive an approval, a text amendment approval to permit this use on this property. We are in receipt of the McMahon review letter dated June 23rd, 2023, which indicated that all technical comments were addressed, and the most recent David Miller review letter dated July 7th, 2023. We appear before the planning commission on July 12th, at which time the commission recommended approval of the plan and the waiver requests. So at this point, I'll have Mike come forward first, just to refresh your recollection a little bit about the project, since it's been over a year, and then Paul will walk you through the plan and the waiver requests.
Good evening all, my name is Mike Zemba, I'm with the U-Haul Company. I reside here in Boiling Springs in central Pennsylvania. Little background on myself, I've been with U-Haul now for a little over 33 years. This is our 78th year in business. But a background on U-Haul is, we started in 1945, just to get you a little familiarity. On our first years, we were independent U-Haul dealerships, which were actually helping people move from point A to point B throughout the United States. 1955, we actually expanded into Canada, so we're in all 50 states and every province in Canada. Our main purpose was to help people in their times of moving, and as we progressed in our business model in the 1970s, uh, we saw a need also for self-storage to come in with the moving sector of what we do. So we've always had boxes and moving supplies to be able to help people self-storage. And then our expansion, we've been in, um, uh, this area in Lancaster County and, uh, East Petersburg since 1978. And our facility over there, we've actually, uh, um, been very proud to be a part of the community to help serve everyone in this area. And through customer reviews and our research, uh, one component that we don't offer is our self-storage and another is U-Box. U-Box is a portable moving and storage solution, and many of our customers actually like that product and service as well, as well as our self-storage component. Um, and as Claudia indicated, we've, um, very excited about this project, um, and expanding a full-blown store, be able to better serve the population. We have a rendering on the, uh, screen right now to kind of show you what our proposed project will look like, and I'll walk you through that a little bit. The, uh, upper left-hand corner is our newest, uh, U-Box, uh, component. That'll house our portable containers, uh, that people can ship anywhere in the world or actually just use it on an in-town local basis here and then around the area. Our three-story proposed building, well, uh, it's an expansion of what we currently have. The left-hand corner will be our retail showroom, which, um, will sell boxes and moving supplies to support storage and, um, the moving public, along with aftermarket trailer hitches and accessories. Within the building, uh, we're going to contain a little over a thousand independent storage units. There will be climate controlled, all individually alarmed. Um, we provide high-tech security in our facilities, along with the individual alarm. Any of our customers that come in and out of that will actually have, uh, their own lock, their own key, and they'll also have a code, uh, for access control into their specific room. There'll be an elevator in there, and, uh, it'll actually allow customers to go from not only the ground floor, but also to the second and third. That will also be access controlled, so if you have a room on a second floor, you'll have access to the second floor, but nowhere else in the building. Uh, we're providing exterior load unload, as well as three drive-in interior load unload spaces also. Not on the screen, but, uh, part of, uh, what we're offering too is some outside drive-up units, and also some recreational, um, in the screen you can see, uh, in orange on the left, entering our site, um, on this picture right here, you'll enter between the existing Turkey Hill and the Randazzo's Pizza Shop. And as you come in, uh, if you make an immediate right in between the green spaces, there'll be a gate there, and, uh, you'll see, uh, the two larger orange rectangles are covered RV and boat storage, and, uh, surrounded by some exterior drive-up self-storage units. We provide, um, uh, ample parking for our customers that will actually handle not only the retail sector, but also the, um, um, moving and storage load unload in front of our building. Obviously, we provide display for our customers whenever you're driving by to, to be able to see our U-Haul equipment as well, so you know what we're offering you. Any questions or any comments or anything that I can help you with or answer?
I, I have none.
Will you retain your Mannheim Pike address possibly for the vehicle rentals and things, or not?
We're, uh, really going to do that, and I'm not sure how long. We believe that, uh, this area, as, as I indicated, we're very much underserving it, and we're very happy and proud to have that location, so we have no intentions of actually parting ways with it.
Looks good to me.
No comments.
Mr. Weaver?
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Paul Navarro, uh, Navarro and Wright Consulting Engineers, I'm a principal with the firm. And for the last year and a half or so, we've been working diligently with, with the team here, uh, with, uh, Mr. Hayne and, uh, with Nate to collaborate, uh, and, and develop, put in front of you a product that is really, um, as compliant as can be with, with all the, uh, zoning and land development ordinance requirements. The site was described as a 13.3 acre site, uh, being access off, uh, State Road through the, um, driveway that is located between the Randazzo's Restaurant and Turkey Hill, as you can see on the exhibit. The, uh, site does have some topography and, and, and other site, uh, characteristics that required us to, um, ask for some waivers. Uh, we've provided documentation and justifications to the engineers, uh, for, uh, consideration. Those, those waivers were approved by the planning commission, uh, where, given the, uh, support by the planning commission to be approved by this board, there was a total of eight, and one of them, uh, had, uh, was dealing with the, with the buffer requirement, which, um, since the property abuts the agricultural district, um, we had to provide buffering along the northern boundary and along the eastern boundary, and also along 283. So we, um, went through several concepts that would, uh, satisfy some of the concerns of U-Haul as far as visibility. Uh, we provided different plantings, lower, uh, plantings along the, uh, 283 boundary, but we provided, uh, much more robust screening along the other two boundaries that abut Landis Farm, and a full growth plan is shown in the exhibit that was before you earlier than you see here on the chairs. So that, uh, that was one of the waivers. The, the other ones, two, three, four, five, uh, deal with, um, stormwater management. At the lower end of the site, we have, uh, the stormwater detention basin, and as, as many of you know, that Lancaster County has a car stepography, we found, uh, groundwater at a very shallow level, so the best way to, um, attack the stormwater was using the managed release control method, which, uh, allows for, uh, surface discharge with no infiltration at a control rate. We have submitted the MPDS permit, which is, uh, was reviewed by PADP, they've accepted the method, they gave us some comments, so we are awaiting, um, a response to our, uh, comment letter some, sometime later, uh, this month, hopefully next week. The other, um, waiver requests are relatively minor, plant scale, the planting islands and, and the parking. Uh, we provided, we, through research that we conducted on facilities similar to this, um, in other parts of the country, uh, we established that a 24 parking space requirement was average for a facility of this type. We are providing 25 parking spaces, and again, we've received support for that waiver. Uh, so we would need action on those eight waivers from this board. Anybody has any questions or need more information?
Uh, when do you, are you going to break ground on the project? When do you plan to? And how, how long would the building process take, would you, would you say?
I think we're going to break ground as soon as we have the permit from, on the stormwater.
Okay.
Construction, uh, period estimated to be one year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
I'm good.
Mr. Weaver?
Uh, I guess with the parking, you know, I guess a lot of times we over, over, um, specify the parking, so I think I'm okay with that one. Other than that, no comments?
Okay. Okay.
Well, I guess we would need action on, on the waivers.
So, before we do that, do we have any, um, questions or comments from the audience on this project? Yes, ma'am, if you could please come to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Cindy Robinson. I have one question. Are you going to put any more lights there? Where like you're driving back to your building, will there be any lights or anything? I mean, like traffic lights.
Uh, no, we conducted several traffic studies that, um, determined that no additional turning lanes, traffic.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Any from Zoom? Mr. Hayne, did you have anything you wanted to, to add? Okay. So, just one thing for the community, um, to keep in mind, Mrs. Roberts, Robertson, your question was kind of on point. This particular site, this is not a rezone, this has actually been, uh, zoned, uh, for many, 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 many years. It's one of the few parcels north of 283, uh, that, um, development is allowed to take place in. And this particular site, what is, uh, beneficial about it, it is very low impact, especially when it comes to traffic. So historically, um, storage units have a very low volume of traffic, so, um, if something's going to be developed there, I don't think there's really much better, uh, of a use than what we have going in there, so, um, just wanted to make you aware of that. So if there's no other, go ahead.
The Lancaster County Planning Commission raised an interesting thought that I think they could have answered, but nonetheless, uh, it's an interesting thought in that this farmland may have had a preservation on it and tax credits, and if so, those credits would need to be covered now with the redevelopment. Is that researched, and do we know that answer? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So gentlemen, um, we have some, uh, modifications before us. Is there a motion to approve modifications requested numbers one through seven, and conditionally approve request number eight, subject to all staff and engineering comments?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to approve the calculating parking requirements using alternative criteria in accordance with zoning ordinance section 270, 8.2A, subject to all staff and engineering comments?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And then finally, the final land development plan, is there a motion to approve the final land development plan for U-Haul Township file 211502, subject to all staff and engineering comments?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. LaFevere, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, and welcome to Easthamfield.
Mr. Chair, I think really might, one thing to explain here is this alternate parking method, why we do it.
Go ahead.
And the whole idea of doing it is that we don't put excess parking down that doesn't get used, it's actually calculated based off the site requirements, and it's a, a smart way of doing business around the township. And so, that's why the alternate approach has, uh, been put into our ordinance to allow a little bit more flexibility, so that we don't have parking acres and acres of unused parking space, so.
It also just, it reduces, uh, the impervious as well, by providing parking that's commensurate with the use rather than, uh, ordinances that don't necessarily, cannot be adapted to this type of use, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Up next, we have Landis Farm Phase Four Street Dedication of Wheatfield Vista. Is there anyone here, uh, from the audience or on Zoom?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
So at the last Traffic Commission meeting, you had the plan to approve the signage that was necessary on that street. The street's been paved, it's been inspected, and it's ready to be, get dedicated to the township from the developer.
Any comments or questions from the board on this?
Just lots of good feedback on the developer, and EJ Stoltz, and the work they've done. Lots of good community, community feedback.
Um, any questions or comments from the audience? Any from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-18 and sign the deed of dedication, accepting dedication of Wheatland Vista and the Landis Farm Development?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Okay, up next, Bruce Rhode.
So Bruce Rhode LLC has submitted a petition to amend the zoning ordinance to allow heavy equipment sales, service, and repair in the Regional Commerce Center zoning district. What I'm looking for is acknowledgement of the plan, so it can be submitted to the planning commissions.
So in other words, we're not taking any action on this tonight, this is just a formality, and it will go through the planning commission and then come back to us.
Correct.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board on this?
Nope.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the audience on this? Any from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of petition from Bruce Rhode LLC and submit the petition for review to the county and township planning commissions?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. LaFevere, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Up next, Penn Medicine, LGH Foundation.
Penn Medicine LG Health Foundation has submitted a noise ordinance variance request for their fundraising gala, this is an annual event, you approved this last year, and so they have resubmitted for this year. They will hold a reception outside, under a tent, outside of the Ann Barshinger Cancer Institute at 2102 Harrisburg Pike on October 21st, from 7:00 to 10:30 PM. The, uh, foundation has requested this variance through a letter to the board, the variance has been posted as required on the website, and so staff recommends the approval of the noise ordinance variance submitted by Penn Medicine LG Health Foundation for their gala and associated reception to be held on October 21st until 10:30 PM at the Ann Barshinger Cancer Institute at 2102 Harrisburg Pike.
Any questions or comments from the board?
None.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Any from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to grant the noise ordinance variance as submitted by Penn Medicine LGH Health Foundation to allow their gala and associated reception to be held on October 21st, 2023, until 10:30 PM at the Ann B. Barshinger Cancer Institute located at 2102 Harrisburg Pike?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Okay.
Second for Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Commonwealth Financing Authority Grant Submission Request?
So, uh, the, the scripter here is, is missing the fact that this is for Route 72 and Littit's Road. That project has, the township has taken control of that for a temporary signal at that intersection. We have received a $175,000 grant for that project. However, after a meeting with some of the businesses surrounding it, the scope of work has changed, and we now need to put a driveway in for some of the business, such as BR Kreider. So what we are going to do is seek funding from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for $510,000 to cover those additional scope of work costs. And I'm seeking your permission to submit that grant.
Any questions or comments on this?
This, this is something that we've been working on for a while, and as I understand it, both our elected officials are helping promote this, and have been very supportive as in Senator Almond and, uh, Representative Miller. Obviously, uh, there's a reason behind this with the accidents that occurred last year, um, and I'm hoping that that will weigh heavily on the grant agency that, um, this is an intersection that needs to be addressed at this point. I know that our representatives are doing everything in their power to, to promote this, um, but this is, uh, much needed at this point. Uh, the, the long-term solution of building roundabouts could be five to 10 years realistically until we see it. Uh, so this temporary signal is going to be up for a while. When we had the meeting with PennDOT to address the concerns that BR Kreider had, which were very much legitimate, that what the impact it was going to have to their business, uh, this was the agreed upon compromise by all parties, so, again, hopefully we can get the funding in place, given that we got PennDOT's blessing, we got the owner's blessing, we had the representatives pressing it, we have a clear accident need at this location, um, that this will, uh, get the funding we need so that we can, uh, address the, why I don't usually like to say, the safety issues at this location.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Mr. Weaver?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Okay. Any questions or comments from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-19, authorizing submission of the CFA grant application and signatures for the Littit's Route, Littit's Road and Route 272 Temporary Signalization Project?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have old business and under old business on our agenda, we have the church Knoll Master Plan Schedule. And I'm just going to review this real quick. July sixth, staff conveyed and reviewed data and pics with DMA, which is David Millan Associates, our engineer. On July eighteenth, the Park and Rec Group had a meeting with staff to review sketches. July nineteenth through the twenty-eighth, our engineer DMA will work on the redrafted plan. And on August second, plans will be presented to the board and the public for review. And on August sixteenth, the board will consider an adoption and acceptance of a master plan for the church road and Knoll Road Park. Is there anything else to be added to this at this time or any other comments from the board?
My only comment just to make everybody aware is I will be in Germany on August second. So I will be missing the meeting, but other than that, no comments.
It should be addressed at this point. This, this schedule indicates that there is a resolution of Park and Rec Committee as of yesterday to give the direction to DMA to develop an updated plan. And actually, part of the committee, not the whole committee, went ahead with that effort. And I think you should bring up that plan now since two thirds or three quarters of the plan, four, four fifths of the board have already seen that plan. And I, I need it to be known that that is not, in my mind, as a member of Park and Rec, a resolution. And before more money is expended with design and other considerations for this question, which has been with us now a year, there has to be some resolution as to how we're going to proceed. And jumping ahead in the agenda, we have the new matter of an interested party that wants to be involved at the, let's call it sod farm for simplicity. So there is an alternate plan that I prepared based on the hundred and twenty-four responses from the survey. We requested the residents of Easthamfield Township to do a survey and give them, give us direction. That survey yielded forty percent interest in passive uses and forty percent or so each interest in active with some other things thrown in that were either undefinable or of a different nature. The question is how this track should be developed and addressed because I think we need to understand something is going to happen now. The, there was a consensus of the board a month ago in discussion that the uses of this track could be separated with the more passive uses along Knoll Road, Hermosa and Randy, where there are residences and where we heard a lot of concern from residences over the year about the impact to the residences. This would be quieter things, a walking trail, family camping, pavilion, excuse me, and things like that. The concern is that the revised plan that the board or that the committee looked at yesterday still has a full emphasis on four baseball fields and uses a disproportionate, in my opinion, and I think realistically, a disproportionate amount of the active area for the ball fields. There's an area on that plan that is addressed as soccer up in the corner where it is adjacent to Knoll Road, Hermosa. Anyone who's ever played soccer, I think, would surely agree that that is not a passive recreation. Nor is the
So Mr. LaFever.
Observation by folk.
Can I just?
Just a moment, please.
No.
It's not passive.
Mr. LaFever, just hear me out. So it seems to me that you're prepared to discuss this entire matter tonight. I, I am not, and we have not gotten in our packets, you're, apparently you have your own plan?
Yes, I have a plan.
Okay.
And what?
Park and Rec has a plan.
My concern is.
Can I finish?
Well, you didn't let me finish, but.
I think, okay, I think what would be appropriate is we have a schedule, right?
You don't have a schedule, that's my basic point.
Can I finish? We have a schedule that the plan or plans will be presented at our next meeting, which is August second. And I personally, rather than hear you explain your plan, if you actually have one, I would like to see it ahead of time. Be prepared to discuss it. And I think at our next meeting, that would be appropriate. In addition, all the residents that have come and talked about this have not had a heads up that there was going to be an in-depth discussion on this tonight. And that includes everyone, neighbors, H Y A, everybody. So I don't think it's appropriate for us to go down that road tonight. We do have it on the schedule for August second, and I think we stick to that schedule. And you can present everything that you want to talk about at that time.
The reason for my addressing this tonight is the schedule about to be recognized. And cast in stone says DMA is going to start working on this tonight into the twenty-eighth of July. That is a process that I do not think should go ahead. It's actually going ahead by part of the committee, which it should not have. But this is a dilemma we have. Yes, I'll wait till August second. But I want it made clear that it's not a done deal.
Okay, I think you've done that. All right. Any comments on the schedule itself, any other things that we want to discuss on that tonight?
I, I'd just like to thank the staff for the work that they've done on the project to this point. They put a lot of time and work into it and give it a lot of thought. We don't have a, there is no final recommendation in place. Based on the meeting that we had on Tuesday, we are going to consider two plans when the time comes. That was agreed to.
Okay. Are there any questions on the schedule? Not on the park itself, on the schedule? Or comments from the audience on the schedule? The schedule only? There'll be. Sure, come on up.
Patty Clark, thirty-three thirty-seven Cochran Drive. Just, I do have two questions. Just the first has to do with the parks, the Park and Recreation Group? And which members of the Board of Supervisors are part of that group and would have reviewed the, the input, public input?
So the Park and Rec's Board of Supervisors members would be Mr. Bennett and Mr. LaFever. And I believe there's some additional staff from the, from the township that also makes that up as well.
Okay, and so both of them would have reviewed along with the staff, the information from the public input, is that right?
That is correct.
From the charade, and I have done that.
Okay, and then just out of curiosity with the process, out of that review of the staff and the Parks and Recreation Group, like what, what kind of information was shared with, with DMA? In terms of like what, what guidance were they given in terms of drawing up a new plan? How was, I mean, were they part of that review with the Parks and Recreation Group? Or like what was shared with them in terms of guidance for developing a new plan?
I, I believe they were provided all the information that we had on the, on the plan that they had worked on or are working on. They were given no guidance, at least by me, and I don't believe there was any guidance given by, by Mr. LaFever. So it was real, there, I view it as they're the professionals. They do this for townships all over the county. And I pretty much am putting it in their hands in terms of a proposal. But, but I have reviewed every one of the slides, all forty-three or forty-four of them that, that were sent to us. I've, I've reviewed every comment. And in my view, they're working towards a fair and complete just a, an overall, I think they're working towards a good plan. Are we there yet? No, but I think we'll, we'll get there.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions or comments from the audience?
Nancy LaFever, sixteen eighty-nine Landisville Road. I want to know how much all these reviews by this. Yeah, I'm not told enough. I want to know how much this is costing the township for all these reviews that they're doing with the DMA. I mean, this is costing a lot of money.
Absolutely, it is. It, it is, and it's a shame it is because it is a concept plan. And, and I, I can't stress this enough. And it's a shame that we've had to spend all of this money on a concept plan. However, when something becomes controversial and for whatever reason, there's been a lot of misinformation about this plan spread in the neighborhoods around this plot of land that the township owns, that we want to make a park at some point. So with that, to satisfy that, that's why the costs are there. I wish it didn't have to be that way, and I don't think it needs to be that way, but it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Dees, good to see you here.
Yeah, I. So I'm looking at the agenda and C eight two. As the plan will be presented to the board and the public for review.
Could you please give your name and address for the minutes?
Part of these at seven seven nine East Side Drive.
Thank you.
Seven five three eight. So is that the last? Would that be the last meeting to discuss this topic?
Well, there would be the meeting when we would approve it, when we would vote on it, which would be the very next meeting, August sixteenth. So on August second, we should get our supervisor packet, have all the information provided to us as board members, which should include whatever plans are going to be presented to the public. At that meeting, those plans would be presented to the public. They would be afforded opportunity to comment on those plans that are, are as they are presented on the August second. And then no action would be taken on August second. We wouldn't vote on it. We would vote on it August sixteenth. And again, it is a concept plan. So whatever we vote on, most likely will not end up being exactly what we vote on. It won't be the same.
So if we, if the public has comments that suggest change, how would they, how would you handle that in terms of making a final plan?
So you'll be able to, to tell us what changes you want, you'll be able to email us. But and Mr. Dees, in all fairness to us, this process has been painfully long for a concept plan. And I, I don't know that me as, I myself as chairman have any desire to postpone it any longer. So I fully plan on voting on it August sixteenth. Unless there's something drastic that comes about. But again, we're talking about a concept plan that has the ability to change over time and over years. It's not set in stone. But again, everybody will, will get one more shot to give their input.
So next question, since I've been here, Mr. LaFever had something that seemingly he wanted to add to the plan. Is that going to be taken into account as well?
Yes, that's my understanding that you have your own plan, Mr. LaFever, or developing one?
I have it.
I, please, please, please not tonight.
Answer your question, sir. And, and in all fairness, this now needs to be cleaned up by DMA and also be here on August the second.
Well, I think you guys, let's, let's have you work with staff behind the scenes on getting that accomplished. But yes, there will be two plans. And if I follow what you're saying, that's fine. I think if you want to give him a rough draft to do a sketch plan, at this point, what does it matter? I'm fine with that. But let's do it on August second, when we have a time to review everything together and take a look at it, and we can come back before you one more time and go from there.
I understand, and then you'll have the board's plan and Mr. LaFever's plan on August the second?
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask DMA if they would have time between August second? No, actually now and August second to turn Mr. LaFever's version into a presentable plan?
I guess it would probably, it would probably help to see how much work there is involved in the plan. I can look at that after the meeting, if you'd like.
We'll all work with the software you've been using to date.
Okay.
Won't find it to be too burdensome.
And just, just to clarify one, I think what Mr. Dees just said, the board plan. It's two concept plans the rest of the board has not reviewed. I saw it in the conference room for about two minutes. But it's not a board plan yet. That's the whole idea of the August second meeting is that would become the board. Correct. So just wanted to clarify that. It's not like there's a plan that's been circulating around the board members and we've all got copies. That's the whole point that Mr. Wigglesworth is making is we can't talk about things. I haven't even seen Mr. LaFever's plan and I got a two-minute look about at six fifty tonight of the other plan. I've not looked at either plan realistically. So, and that's what the August second meeting is all about.
And again, I can't emphasize this enough, no matter what plan we approve, it will change. If we approve Mr. LaFever's plan, that plan is not in stone. It will change over time. If we approve whatever other plan the Parks and Rec Committee comes up with, again, that plan is going to change over time. This is a concept plan. Plain and simple.
Comment to Mr. Dees. If, if you have something revolutionary that you want to like to put forward in terms of something for the park, please contact me directly.
I just had a thought here. I'm looking up in the MPC, I know there's like a general plan. I don't know if it's at the county level or the township level where you're just saying, here's what we want to do in the next twenty years. It's not legally binding, it's just a general idea, a concept, and there's a term for it. I can't think what that is. I'm just wondering if you can call it that type of plan where it's, it's a legally defined term. It just, it means, I don't know, like a comprehensive plan at the county level isn't necessarily binding, it's just the county's idea where we should be going. I think that's kind of what we're trying to say here. We're just saying, here's a piece of land. I'm just coming up with a general idea, what can we do with it so we don't box ourselves in? And then realize later that we messed up. So that's really what we're trying to do here. I just think maybe we can, I, I think a concept plan is a good term for it, but maybe there's a better term.
I'm all for whatever term we can come up with.
If it, if it felts better, the Amos Her Plan, Master Park Plan is in existence. It's on version three of the plan. It does, it's not cast in stone. It offers protection somewhat from the residents of the township. Because if that plan changes, staff will bring it back to the board of supervisors and it becomes a public document for review and change. Similar to what I would foresee that this plan would also be. It might be adopted at one point, but if it changes in any way, it would come back to the board for another review.
So if we added bocce courts, for example, or if we added a children's play park down the road?
It wasn't on the original plan, we would come back.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Working document.
Yep. Okay, one more.
Megan Connell eleven fifty-seven Old Eagle Road. So does that mean if something is on the concept plan that it could possibly be removed down the road?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, one more.
Concept plan, then I would assume having not all of the details of the plan, you're going to be considered presented for face development?
So we've been quite clear like how how we got here, Mr. Dees, and I'm not sure how much up to speed you are, but like how we even got to this point. But we were approached by HYA a year ago, year and a half ago. I don't I don't even about the need for they wanted some baseball fields. You know, our response to them then and our response to them now is, you know, we have some property, but we don't have money to pay for it. And, you know, that's really still where we're at. So that's the whole driver behind this. We didn't want to put in baseball fields in the middle of that piece of property and not allow it to be used for anything else. We wanted to have some kind of general idea or conception of if we were going to provide them space for baseball fields, where it would be and that would make the best use of that land. So that's how we got to where we are now. And again, this is not going to be a fast process. We don't have the funds. We've been very upfront with that for baseball fields. We don't have the funds right now for the walking trails or anything else that's going to be on that plan. We have some major infrastructure projects that we're on the hook for. You know, and we're going to have some challenges budget-wise going forward, meeting those projects. So we've been, we've all, I think all of us, that's one thing that we've been unanimous on, is that we don't have the funds to build the park.
With your concept.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ellen Burkhart. I live at eleven oh nine Old Eagle Road. I understand the finances would be involved with something like this and coming over the money to pay for it. I have a question concerning that. I understand there have been communications by Mr. Bennett with Dick's Sporting Goods. Is that correct, Mr. Bennett?
That's not true.
Not true.
Not true.
And again, this is one of the things, folks, that is so frustrating for us up here on this board. I mean, we're talking about trying to preserve open space, fifty acres that the township has owned for, what is it, thirty years now? That we've owned this piece of property for thirty, forty years? This is a way to preserve it, that it doesn't get developed. It makes a good use of the land that everybody can enjoy it, not just a few neighbors that live next to it. So some of these accusations, it's really hard to take. You know, we're your neighbors.
I understand. It's not as much an accusation as it is a concern. Because if we're going to outside places to get the funding, we have to be really careful where they are. One second. I am familiar with the Dick's Sports Complex that they helped develop in the Cranberry Township area north of Pittsburgh, and it is in no way, shape, or form a community park. So if that's a direction you're considering going, I highly suggest that you that you reconsider that as an option for financing.
It is not.
It's not.
Okay.
It never has been.
Okay, I could I should kind of address that too, because my son's family has played HY ball. They're not anymore. They're all outgrown it. But where that rumor has started, and I will call that a rumor because it's not true. Where that rumor start is HYA has gotten, just like any of the other organizations, just like soccer has done and others. They get sponsors. So you if you go on and you look at baseball fields and you'll see signs in the background, and you'll see law firms and other groups that have donated to the organization. Dick's is just one of their donors. And it doesn't mean that just because they're receiving a donation from a law firm or from an engineering firm or from Dick's or from, you know, Pet Place or wherever there, it doesn't mean all of a sudden it's this big corporate entity coming in here. They're just a community donor, and all those businesses make donations to all these different sporting groups to help them offset their costs. And that's what I think that might be a source of where the rumor is coming from.
I appreciate that because it was a rather grand, huge walkway, the Dick's Sporting Goods, you know, sports complex. So as long as it's not that, I feel a little more comfortable about that.
Yeah, I don't. Again, I think where that rumor has started and then a rumor takes on a life of its own is the fact that just, you know, all of the sports groups here, you pick a sports group, they have people, the Hark has donors, Wheatland Financial is one of the donors, the Rec Center here. They all have community donors that donate to help offset the cost. They're all nonprofits. And that's really, I think, how somebody has twisted this rumor mill that we got this corporate entity that's coming here calling all the shots, and that's not true at all.
Kentfield High School has Schwanger Oil has a sign on one of the fields, I think. A couple there at high school, too.
And Georgiellis Law Firm, who's been a great donor to the Hemfield community. And I don't think anybody would say that Georgiellis is controlling the whole Hemfield area. But he's a big donor for the many of the Hemfield sports facilities in the school itself. So that's the concept.
Anyone else? Anyone from Zoom? Okay. Little Conestoga Creek, Blue Green Quarter Project Quarterly Update.
So the Stammen Foundation gives us quarterly updates on their progress thus far. They are making progress. What you had in your packet is that they explained that they're still working on intermunicipal agreements. They are doing some construction work. They started at the Barcrest area off of Marietta and putting in the floodplain area, the wetlands. They've got some Lhasa lines to move, so that's going to take a bit of time. They're working on easements with the township as well as Lakswama to continue their efforts as they move toward Harrisburg Pike. They reminded you, they do have a website, lcbgc.org, that you can go on, and it does show their progress and what the project is all about. They talk about their funding and what they've received thus far. They've got committed grant funding of eight million, eight hundred and ten. I can't even say that high a number, eight million, eight hundred and ten hundred thousand dollars of grant funds. They have private funds of just over two point seven million. The final project cost total right now is eleven million, six hundred thousand. And they have pending applications in various agencies for funding, grant funding. So they're making significant strides in progress.
Okay. The Jackson Drive, River Drive.
So the Jackson Drive project is simply a stream restoration, is not trail. That project is from Marietta to Columbia, whereas the Blue Green was from Marietta to just past Harrisburg Pike. So the Jackson Trail Project or Jackson Drive Project is stream restoration only. They're beginning their work. They're beginning their design work. They anticipate getting their permit submitted this November and December, which is what they explained in their update letter. The township has committed fifteen thousand dollars to that project, and they will, you'll be seeing that on your bill list in the coming weeks to submit to them.
We know if that's going to change the floodplain, or is that just basically the stream bed?
Just the stream bed. Well, not actually the bed, the restoration aside.
Any questions or comments in regards to that update on the Little Conestoga Creek, Blue Ridge Quarter, excuse me, Blue Green Quarter, and the Little Conestoga Creek Restoration at Jackson and River Drive? Any questions or comments on those updates? Okay, any from Zoom? Okay, new business? Any new business? Okay. Traffic Commission Report. We had a Traffic Commission Report. This evening, we discussed two main issues. One, speeding on Nestle Road. Chief has done a good job and I think is addressing that issue. We also had an issue that we need to look further into on Marietta Avenue in Roarstown with accidents occurring west. Do I have that right? West of Roarstown Road? Is that correct? And if there's anything that we can do with PennDOT or in conjunction with PennDOT to assist in that and making that a more safer route. For public comment, do we we received a letter that you had emailed us today, Mrs. Schweitzer?
That's correct.
We received a letter for everyone who's here for the Church and Nolt Park Plan. We received a letter sent to the township for from a resident from Warwick Township who is indicating that he is an investor and would like to put a recreational facility at the Church and Nolt area. You know, this just came today, so, you know. My position is, I don't know if anybody else, if everybody from the board has had a chance to read it. If you did, we can discuss it. If not, I mean, for me personally, I think we've all been on board that this was going to remain open space and was not going to be privately developed. That's my personal feeling. That has not changed. And I would not like to see us head down that route or even explore it. And I think if we just had a nodding of heads and not get into a deep discussion about that, we can give him a quick reply back. We can also send it to Parks and Rec Commission if it wants to be further explored for this particular site. I'm not of the feeling that we should do that, but what say you?
I have read it. And what he proposes would dovetail into what some of the planning has been, particularly soccer. He has a new concept with golf, which is computer-driven golf, unique to, I believe, at least the county, if maybe not a larger geographic area, where one uses a golf club and swings it, and it plots where the ball would go and scores. It's rather interesting, a different approach than the other uses we've had. The concern I had reading this is he's looking at a lease relationship with us. If Hummer turf broke the lease and walked away tomorrow, we'd have fifty acres of land to mow within a week to ten days. What my point is, we would be left with whatever. So if we consider the proposal, we have to consider that someday East Hemfield Township might own and need to manage or disassemble what has been left by the LSE. So that's a nutshell. There's merit in the proposal. I think a problem is, my concern is, we're using too much space there for the active sports recreation. This would even complicate that more. So there's only so much space there, and that's a nutshell.
I'd, in my view, I'd like to see this just be moved over to Parks and Recreation. Let us take a look at it. This was hardly a proposal that we got today. It was some thoughts and a couple of ideas. We don't know how, we don't know how valid this is. We don't know who the investors are. And it's a it's a go slow, and I got some other thoughts about it, but we don't need to talk about it here tonight. But again, that would be my recommendation that they that the inquiry just move over to Parks and Rec and let us deal with it and go from there.
Might not hurt to have the discussion in Parks and Rec, because it might be something that could be transferred to the our actual Four Seasons with the Rec Authority. So I think there might be some merit to that. I mean, I don't think it's time to change the concept plan discussion in two weeks.
No.
And I am not opposed to having Parks and Rec look at it, but I would be probably not in favor of it at this point because I think we would have no control over what's done there. Well, we would have control, but they're going to have their own idea what they want to build, and that is against what we've been doing with getting community input. I think it will also happen, if they did that, it would happen very quickly, which is not what we've been saying, which was that it would take twenty years to build all this out. So it'd be basically the opposite of what we've been saying so far. So I would not really see myself in favor of it, but.
Yeah, I mean, no problem if you guys want to talk to them at Parks and Rec, and maybe there's a synergy with the golf course, and some of these things can be moved over there or something like that. But again, I'm where Mr. Weaver is. I think we should keep it as public property. I don't think we should lease it for any kind of for-profit business like this. If we're looking to make money, there's many other things that we could do or explore, which I don't think we should. But there would be a lot more profitable prospects for us if that's what this were all about. So for me, I would like to keep, see it remain in township control. I'd like to see it as open space. And I'd like us move to move towards the direction of permanently keeping it dedicated for open space so that future boards won't have the opportunity to develop it in the future. That's my position of where I'm at with it.
Well, just to clarify, my position is the fact that I think there's synergy on our Four Seasons.
Right.
Site where we have, we have land where we have been looking at things like that. And I think that was, I've seen Mr. Bennett nod his head a little bit. I think there's, we can hear him out. Doesn't mean it's going to be something that's going to be considered. We've all made that very clear. This is going to remain a community park. It's not a for-profit business locations. But there are actually other sites in the township, or maybe this, there could be some synergy. And we did have a point where there was entity that was interested in doing this exact same thing at the golf course, and it fell through. So if maybe a new a new approach to it would be something that could really help Four Seasons out by providing another activity actually in the golf courses, golf related, so.
Okay. So then if I'm hearing everybody, it'll move to the Park and Recs and a future discussion at a future date?
Right.
Okay. Any other new business? Any other public comment for any non-agenda item tonight? Yes?
Fred Canar one oh nine Clover Circle. I just was amazed at the rain garden work that's going on out there. I didn't know what a rain garden was going to look like, but walk by it pretty much every day and get to see the progresses out there, all the plants that are going in. I thought everything was going to die. There's water on there, and you have two new residents in there. We noticed it was one duck, and now there's two ducks in there. So I was wondering, was that on the original Amos Her Plan, or did you have to modify it to get that rain? Rain garden on there? Was that on there like forty years ago, or was that?
No, that wasn't. But there wasn't a plan forty years ago.
Changed over time, right?
Yes.
The ducks are definitely a modification.
And and I mean, I heard a comment, and I thought, you know, we have soccer fields out there. We have baseball fields out there. We have lacrosse fields out there, and they're all active things, right? Can you hear them? I would say seventy-five percent, eighty percent of the time, there's silence out there. It's just a big, nice field. So even though it's set up as an active area, there's not people paying soccer twenty-four seven. There's not people playing lacrosse twenty-four seven. I mean, it's 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 not like when you make the demon area active. I like the small trails, the walking trails around the side. That's great. I mean, I don't need, I don't need a walking trail next to my walking trail. So I can do the entire perimeter of the park. I can go uphill if I feel like it. I can walk by the benches and stuff. All those things are really awesome. But again, just because something is active doesn't mean it's active twenty-four seven. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any from Zoom? Any from Zoom? Managers report?
So the Centerville Road South project is moving along. Um, there is significant impact to traffic. And basically just avoid the area if you at all possibly can. But they are moving along and, and no major obstacles are occurring. The Church Street paving project, that's the roadway that's closed by Penn Dot's project. They anticipate opening that up again and on August the seventh. So that's almost around the corner. Uh, once that's open, there will be no more activity until the following year in twenty twenty four, at which point then there will be uh, doing the sidewalks. And curbing at the Landisville side and then the resurfacing will be the final version of that.
Oh, I could just comment on the Church Street. I know we even passed have talked about eliminating our one lane bridges on Nolt and Snapper Dan. And I so appreciate those one lane bridges right now with all the detour traffic that's going through our neighborhood. Um, so as we future look at a uh, capital projects and we look at the future replacement of those culverts. They are a wonderful traffic control for managing speed through those neighborhoods. Um, and like I talked to you in the past, Cindy, about those, I would like to. Keep those one lane, maybe we down the road put a sidewalk across each one of them because they're one lane. Uh, but they are very much appreciated right now in our neighborhood. Um, they, they do a wonderful job at slowing traffic down.
So Old Royston Road Bridge Project, that is still struggling. There's, there, I don't believe they are working right now. Uh, they do have utility issues that they're waiting for to the point now that they've extended the project to this. Extended the project till May of next year because they have problems with the stream access and um. Getting P P N out to, to move along on their poll issues. So uh, that's a May twenty twenty four completion date at this point. The Farmingdale Road Project, uh, that's a lot of prep work being done until the mast arms for. The signal at Orville and Good and Marietta and Good arrive, which is sometime in mid-August, and then you should see more active work happening on those intersections. As it was noted before the truck study, uh. The meeting with West Hemphill Township is scheduled for the twenty fourth of July. Hopefully that will resolve in a final version of the traffics, truck study. That we can then present to the Traffic Commission and the Board of Supervisors. The Stony Battery Trail, the list of outstanding items is whittling down. Uh, we're still waiting for P P N L to handle the intersection work. Verizon, that's not P P N L, Verizon work. Um, and the developer stands ready to uh. Make those modifications as soon as those wires are off the pole. The other issue that's still outstanding is T connectivity. We do have a draft agreement in place that was sent to the owner today. He's reviewing it. Once he gets back to me. That hopefully will be on your agenda in August. The Dairy Road Project, nothing happening on that. Route seventy two and Lititz. We explained what was happening there. We have gotten support letters, so uh, we're going to be ready for that submission on the twenty first of July. The finance uh, department is in, in transition at this point, very busy. They are transitioning into a new software program, Casell. And if anyone's changed their accounting software, you know what kind of headaches that causes, but they are moving through it. The contract, trash contract is up for renewal. I've extended the G F L, the. Uh, interest in extending the contract, which would be to the benefit of the township and its residents. They have not gotten back to me yet. If they're willing to extend it, it has to be a mutual agreement. Police contract is all but settled. We're waiting for the final version of the contract so that we can review it. Um, we have a meeting with our attorney tomorrow to, I believe it's tomorrow, to review uh, comments that he had. Um, so we're, we're getting close to the end of that process to finalize that contract. You have a list of stormwater projects. The only thing that really has changed right now is the A her park phase two project. We have received the M P D S permit, so we are moving forward with the bidding. The bid opening is scheduled for the thirty first of this month to be awarded on the second. It'll be starting hopefully on the eighteenth or at least a notice to proceed. And then hopefully finishing up in November of this year. That includes uh, two bocce courts. Uh, pavilion, additional parking and some rain gardens. I don't believe there's anything else significant that has been added. Uh, Darcy Drive. I am trying to whittle down on a common date to meet with those residents up there to talk about their uh, failing drainage pipe between their homes. So hopefully that, I'll have some more information by the time we meet next. And that's the end of my report unless you have questions.
I have none. Mr. Little Fever? Mr. Bennett?
Okay.
Mr. Russell?
Yep.
Mr. Weaver? Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay. And we will adjourn our meeting at eight fifteen P M. And we will see you August second. Thank you.